Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome, this is the June 21st, 2018 meeting of the Tennessee State University Board of Trust now called into order. To get started, first of all, I would like to acknowledge our new student trustee we're very proud to have, a young lady we're very proud of. Would you help me welcome Ms. Braxton Simpson, please? Braxton, if I could take a personal liberty, if you could share your major and your GPA and all those grades you signed in the ballot.
Hello, everyone, I am Braxton Simpson. I am a rising junior here at Tennessee State University, majoring in agricultural sciences with a concentration in agribusiness, and I currently hold a 4.0 GPA.
Also, I'd like to acknowledge any THEC personnel who may be present, you could be recognized. Also, our cabinet members that you would be recognized. All of our deans who are here, I'd like to recognize you as well. Thank you so much. This time, we're going to open up with our inv-
Coaches over there.
Huh?
Coaches.
Oh, coaches, yes, that's right. Coaches, yes, coaches and all of our officials and great folks. It's great convocation of influence, thank all of you for being here today. I'm going to have my invocation, Dean Stevens, if he is not present, I'll take a personal liberty and ask colleague who's here today, great Dr. Enoch Fuss, would you lead us in the con- invocation, sir? Thank you. Thank you, good count.
Let's pray. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, Thou who have brought us thus far on our way, Thou who has by Thy might led us into the light, keep us forever on the right path, we pray, lest our feet stray from the places, oh God, where we met Thee, lest our hearts drunk with the wine of the world we forget Thee. Shadow beneath our hand may we forever stand, true to You, oh God, and true to our native land, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Pastor Fuss, we appreciate you. June the 19th, 1912 was the birth of Tennessee State University. And this past Tuesday, Tennessee State University celebrated 106 years old. And so, part of that birthday celebration is cake to my left to be enjoyed by all who are present after our board meeting, so hang in there with us. We're giving you a great incentive to hang in there with us. Thank all of you so much. So as you'll note in your board materials for today's board meeting, we have several items for today's agenda, and it's very comprehensive, and we want to move forward. So the second item listed on your agenda is the roll call declaration of a quorum. So at this time, we need to have a roll call. Secretary Pennington, will you please call the rolls?
Thank you. Trustee Cole?
Here.
Trustee Corbille?
Here.
Trustee Freeman?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Here.
Trustee Martin? Trustee McKenzie? Trustee Mitchell?
Here.
Trustee Sekman?
Here.
Trustee Walker?
Here.
Trustee Simpson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. The first item, actually the item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the March 15th, 2018 board meeting. You'll have in your June 21st, 18 board materials, the minutes of that meeting on June 21st, for the June 21st meeting, this board meeting. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our March 15th board meeting. Is there a motion?
Some movement, Chair.
Thank you very much, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, enter discussion. Hearing none, question is on the motion to approve the minutes for my March the 15th, 2018 board meeting, as contained in your board materials, June 21st, 2018 board meeting. All of those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections, about the same? Any abstentions?
Actually, we're doing a, well, we don't have to yet, since he hasn't joined the call.
Very well.
When he joins the call-
When he joins, we do a roll call, absolutely, okay. At that point, the motion is approved. Thank you so much for that clarification. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the modified calendar for the 2018 Board of Trustees meeting, the March 15th, 2018 board meeting. The Board approved the following meetings for the remainder of the 2018 calendar year: Thursday, June 21st, 2018; Thursday, September 13th, 2018; Thursday, November 15th, 2018. The university proposes to move the September 13th, 2018 board meeting to September the 20th, to resolve scheduling conflicts. So I'll entertain a motion to modify the 2018 board meeting calendar by moving the September 13th, 2018 meeting to September 20th. Is there a motion?
I move to modify the board meeting from September the 13th to September 20th.
Thank you very much, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to modify the 2018 board meeting calendar by moving the September 13th meeting to September the 20th, 2018. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion is approved. The next item on our agenda is the Audit Committee Report. Chair recognizes Audit Committee Chair, Trustee Cole, who will report out the actions and other items from today's Audit Committee meeting.
The Audit Committee met today to take action on two items and receive and discuss three other items that were presented. The committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the March 15th, 2018 Audit Committee minutes, and the approval of the fiscal year 2018-2019 audit plan. In addition, President Glover and Internal Audit Director Davis discussed the annual report on the internal offices' activities and the Audit Office's quality assurance and improvement program, and the institutional risk assessment. Your board materials contains the information on all of the items that were discussed. As I stated earlier, the Audit Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the minutes of March 15th, 2018 Audit Committee meeting, and they are contained in the June 21 to 2018 board meeting material. You have your 2021 material, and those minutes are in there. On behalf of the Audit Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the March 15th, 2018 Audit Committee meeting as presented in the June 21, 2018 board meeting material.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, after the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2018 Audit Committee meeting, as contained in the board materials for June 21st, 2018 board meeting, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion is approved.
Okay, at today's meeting, we also discussed the audit plan. Internal Audit Director Davis went over the plan for the fiscal year 2018-2019 year. The audit plan was prepared, according to the Department of Internal Audit, using the risk-based approach as identified in the International Standards for Professional Practice of Internal Auditing, which is issued by the Institute of Internal Auditors. And this plan covered the year that will be ending June 30, 2019. On behalf of the Audit Committee, I move to approve the fiscal year 2018-2019 audit plan, as contained in the board materials for the June 21, 2018 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, end discussion. Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the fiscal year 2018-19 audit plan, as contained in the board materials for June 21st, 2018 board meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion is therefore approved.
Chairman Walker, that concludes the Audit Committee report.
Thank you. Trustee Cole, and other members of the Audit Committee for your service on the Audit Committee. The next item on our agenda is the Finance and Budget Report. Chair recognizes the Finance and Budget Committee Chair, Trustee Corbille, who will report out the actions and information of items from today's Finance and the Board Budget Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Budget Committee met today to discuss and vote on the specific committee agenda items. We actually had five different items for approval, and we voted to recommend for the full Board approval of, the first being the approval of the minutes, the second, the approval of the 2018-2019 tuition and mandatory fees, third, the approval of institutional budgets, fourth, the approval of the 2018-2019 compensation plan, and then finally, the approval of the institution's capital construction plan. The Finance and Budget Committee also, for information, had heard reports from President Glover and Vice President for Business and Finance, Ms. Cynthia Brooks and her staff on the composite financial index, on the updates on the institution's plan to sever from the Tennessee Board of Regents on capital management and procurement, and the institution's capital campaign, and along with its holiday schedule. So, as I just stated, the Finance and Budget Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the minutes of 2000, actually, November 16th, 2017. As you might recall, we did not hold a Finance and Budget Committee meeting in March, so we're recommending approval of that meeting today. And so, you have those in your board pack, the materials for that. So on behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the November 16th, 2017 Finance and Budget Committee meeting, as contained in the board book.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Enter discussion. All right, hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the November 16th, 2017 Finance and Budget Committee meeting, as contained in the board materials for June 21st, 2018 board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion is approved. Trustee Corbille.
Yeah, as a reminder on a few things, pursuant to the Focus Act, the Board's bylaws and delegation of authority to the President policy, and TSU policy, this Board must approve all mandatory institutional fees and charges unless specific exceptions are provided. So also remember that a maintenance is considered a fee assessed to students based on the number of credit hours at which they're registered, and commonly referred as tuition, although for fee purposes, tuition is separately defined and assessed as a premium paid for out-of-state students. Other fees represent various other related fees to student activities, athletics, specialized courses, certain services, et cetera. Maintenance and tuition recommendations will generally be considered in the late spring and early summer. So pursuant to the Focus Act, fee increases are established by the Tennessee Higher Education Commission. For the fiscal year 2018-2019, THEC has set a range of maintenance plus other mandatory fees excluding out-of-state students and tuition from zero to 3%. So TSU is proposing an increase of 2.98% for its tuition and mandatory fees. During today's meeting, the committee members discussed the fee proposals, increases with President Glover and Vice President for Business and Finance, Ms. Cynthia Brooks, as well as her staff. Chairman Walker, based on the committee's review and discussion of this agenda item, the committee voted to recommend for approval the fiscal year 2018-2019 tuition and mandatory fees, as contained in the June 21st, 2018 board materials. So on behalf of the Finance Committee and Budget Committee, I move to approve the fiscal year 2018-19 tuition and mandatory fees, as contained in the materials.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the fiscal year 2018-2019 tuition and mandatory fees, as contained in the June 21st, 2018 board materials. Under the Board's bylaws, this agenda item requires a roll call vote. Secretary Pennington, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Aye.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Martin? Trust McKenzie? Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
Yes.
The motion carries. Trustee Corbille?
Thank you. The Finance and Budget Committee also discussed and considered for recommendation the institution's estimated budget for fiscal year 2016-17, which will end at the end of this month, and the proposed budget for fiscal year 2017, actually, proposed budget for 2017-18 as well. So under TBR, and now TSU, budgeting process, the plans of the university are translated into itemized and authorized and systematic plan of operation expressed in dollars for a given period. This policy also recognizes that a budget is a plan, and that circumstances may necessitate revisions or changes to the original plan from time to time. In this view, the university submits detailed budgets for approval three times for each fiscal year. Under the budget control policy, the original budget for each fiscal year is known as the proposed budget, and is prepared in the spring of each year. This budget is based on the level of state funds recommended in the governor's proposed budget, as well as early estimates of factors such as enrollment growth, research activities, and the availability of federal funds. The proposed budget is normally submitted to the Board for approval at the summer board meeting. The October revised budget is prepared in the fall of each year, and is normally submitted to the Board for approval at the winter board meeting. The final budget submitted for each fiscal year is the estimated budget. It includes final adjustments for the current year budget, and is the budget against which final year-end actual amounts are compared. It is prepared, submitted, and considered by the Board at the same time as the proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. You all got that? Okay. So pursuant to the Focus Act, the Board's bylaws and delegation of authority to the President policy and TSU, the Board must approve these institutional budgets. Chairman Walker, based on the committee's review and thorough discussion of the agenda, the committee voted to recommend for approval the institution's estimated budget for fiscal year 2017-18, and the proposed budget for fiscal year 2018-19, as contained in the June 21st, 2018 board meeting materials. So on behalf of the committee, I move to approve the institution's estimated budget for fiscal year 2017-18, and the proposed budget for 18-19, as contained in the June 21st materials.
Thank you so much, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the institution's estimated budget for the fiscal year 2016-17, and the proposed budget for fiscal year 2018 and 19, as contained in the June 21st, 2018 board meeting materials. Under the Board bylaws, this agenda item requires a roll call vote. Secretary Pennington, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Aye.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Martin? Trust McKenzie? Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Epstein.
Trustee Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. TSU policy, formerly TBR guideline, for compensation, sets a university goal of providing all employees with compensation consistent with market, subject to satisfactory job performance and budget availability. The board materials contain the possible strategies used to distribute a pool of funds designated for compensation adjustments. Salary pool for fiscal year 2018 to 2019 is 2.5%, consistent with the total allocated for the regular state of Tennessee employees. No additional amount or percentage is proposed. Unless otherwise provided, these increases do not apply to adjunct faculty, temporary employees, graduate assistants, student workers, or employees on terminal leave status. All eligible employees on the payroll prior to the proposed implementation dates below are eligible for these increases. Pursuant to the Focus Act, the Board's bylaws and delegation of authority to the President policy and TSU policy, the Board must approve institutional compensation plans. During the committee meeting today, the committee members discussed the institution's compensation strategies and proposed compensation plan for 2018 to 2019, and voted to recommend for approval the institution's fiscal year 2018 to 2019 compensation plan. So on behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, I move to approve the institution's fiscal year 2018-2019 compensation plan, as contained in the June 21st, 2018 board materials.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the institution's fiscal year 2018-19 compensation plan, as contained in the June 21st, 2018 board meeting materials. Under the bylaws of the Board, this agenda item requires a roll call vote. Secretary Pennington, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Aye.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Martin? Trust McKenzie? Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, the next agenda item would be the capital budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. In the board materials for today's meeting, you'll find the materials related to the fiscal year 2018-2019 capital construction plan, which is comprised of funding requests involving capital outlay, maintenance, and disclosure of funding requests. The capital construction plan, if approved by the Board, will be presented to the Tennessee Higher Education Commission at a later date. The specific requests are contained in your materials for today's board meeting. On behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, I move to approve the fiscal year 2018-2019 capital construction plan, as contained in the board materials for the June 21st, 2018 board meeting.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the capital construction plan, as contained in the board materials, for June 21st, 2018 board meeting. Pursuant to the Board's bylaws, a roll call vote is required. A motion involving capital expenditures, Secretary Pennington, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee Corbille?
Yes.
Trustee Freeman?
Aye.
Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
Trustee Martin? Trust McKenzie? Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Sekman?
Yes.
Trustee Walker?
Yes.
The motion is approved. Trustee Corbille, do you have any other matters to report from the August 17th, 2017 Finance and Budget Committee meeting?
No, Chairman Walker, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Trustee Corbille, and other members of the Finance Budget Committee for your impeccable service in this important committee. The next item on the agenda is the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Report. Chair recognizes Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Chair, Trustee Morton, in her stead, the Honorable, Trustee Lewis, thank you. To report out the actions and items of today's Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting.
I'm glad you didn't call me Ms. Martin.
No, but not.
The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee met today to consider and vote on five agenda items, and to receive information on other agenda items. As to the action items, after consideration, and consideration, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full Board for approval, March 15th, 2018 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee minutes. Number two, tenure and promotion recommendations. Number three, revised academic programs. Number four, an academic program name change. And lastly, number five, off-campus academic program sites. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also reviewed reports on academic affairs, student affairs, enrollment, and academic calendar, and the campus crime statistics from President Glover and her staff. We are pleased to learn that the campus crime statistics continue to reflect a downward trend in crimes on the campus. The committee had a robust discussion about enrollment, including the decrease in institutional enrollment, the factors attributable to the decline, and the action plan for revising the decline, reversing the declines. I want to thank Trustee in Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee member Sekman for his comments and his passion for enrollment issues and other items, and for bringing a faculty perspective to these issues. I also want to thank our new student trustee, Ms. Braxton Simpson, for her participation on the committee. Information regarding all, the information items are contained in June 21, 2018 board materials. First item, as I stated, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the minutes of the March 15th, 2018 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, as contained in the board material for the June 21, 2018 board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs Committee, I move to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2018 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting, as contained in the board material for June 21, 2018 board meeting.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the March 15th, 2018 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting, as contained in the board materials for June 21st, 2018 board meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion is approved. Trustee Lewis?
The next item, approval of tenure promotion recommendations. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also considered and voted to recommend to the full Board approval of tenure and promotion recommendations, as contained in June 21, 18 board materials. During its meeting, the committee discussed TSU's tenure policy, under which tenure eligible faculty members must apply for tenure in their sixth year. A faculty member is required to submit a portfolio of materials in support of their tenure application. The criteria TSU uses to evaluate applicants include quality instruction, research, and creative activities, public service, and professional activities, and potential for professional growth. With respect to the faculty promotions at TSU, individual faculty members must apply for promotion upon completion of the required years in rank. A tenure or non-tenure track faculty member becomes eligible to apply for promotion when he or she has the required years in rank and meets the defined qualifications for the various faculty ranks, which are assistant professor, associate professor, and professor. The complete tenure and promotion process are contained in your board material for today's meeting. President Glover and Dr. Mosley, interim Vice President for Academic Affairs, were present at the meeting to answer questions and provide pertinent information on the tenure and promotion process, including the criteria utilized to evaluate applicants for tenure and promotion. Based on the committee's review of the material and discussion of the materials with university personnel, the committee voted to recommend for approval by the full Board the tenure and promotion recommendations in their entirety, as contained in the Board's two June 21, 2018 meeting materials. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the tenure and promotion recommendations in their entirety, as contained in the Board's June 21, 2018 meeting materials.
Thank you so much, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the tenure and promotion recommendations in their entirety, as contained in the Board June 21st, 2018 meeting materials. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion is approved. Motion carries, agenda item is approved. Trustee Lewis?
The next item is approval of revised academic programs. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also discussed and considered for recommendation the institution's proposed revised academic programs. The Board's June 21, 2018 meeting materials contain information regarding the process for developing new and revised academic programs, and a list of proposed revised academic programs. Pursuant to TSU's new program development policy, which includes revised programs, requests for a new or revised program are initiated when the department proposing the new revised academic program submits a new revised academic program for review. Once the department develops the proposal, it is reviewed at the departmental committee, college, and university level. The Vice President of Academic Affairs and the President must ultimately approve the proposal. The entire process, including a new program development process flow chart, is included in the Board's material. As I mentioned earlier, President Glover and Dr. Mosley were present at the committee's meeting to answer questions and provide pertinent information on the proposed revised academic programs. Pursuant to the Focus Act, the bylaws and the Board's delegation of authority to the President policy and the- to the president policy, and the board must approve new academic programs. Upon approval by the board, THEC must provide final approval. Based on the committee's review, the materials, and discussion of this agenda item with university personnel, the committee voted to recommend for approval by the full board the proposed new and revised academic programs as contained in the board's June twenty-one, twenty eighteen meeting materials. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the proposed revised academics program as contained in the board's June twenty-one, twenty eighteen meeting material.
Thank you so much, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the proposed revised academic programs as contained in the board's June twenty-first, twenty eighteen meeting materials, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposeds say nay. Abstentions? Motion is approved.
Next item, approval of academic program name change. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee discussed and considered for recommendation the institution's proposed academic program name change. Today's board material contains information regarding the process for recommending modification to names in academic units and academic programs. Under the academic program modification process, departments, colleges may approve academic unit and academic program name modifications through a thirty-day review process, which involves a review of the college and university vice president and president levels. Upon approval by the vice president and the president, the university is required to submit the proposed unit academic program name change modification to the board for final approval. Academic unit academic program name changes do not require THEC approval. During the committee meetings, we discussed the proposed academic program name change with President Glover and Dr. Mosley. Based on the committee's review and the discussion of this agenda item, the committee voted to recommend for approval by the full board the proposed change to the name of the academic program as referenced and contained in the board's June twenty-one, twenty eighteen meeting material. And on behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the proposed change to the name of the academic programs referenced and contained in the board's June twenty-one, twenty eighteen meeting materials.
Thank you so much, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the proposed change to the name of the academic program reference in contained in the board's June twenty-first, twenty eighteen meeting materials, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposeds say nay. Any abstentions? Motion is approved.
And finally, approval of off-campus academic program sites. The action item taken up by the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee involved the institution's proposed off-campus academic program sites. Colleges that seek to operate an academic program off-campus must follow a thirty-day review process. Under the review process, a department will submit an off-campus academic program site request to the college, and once approved at the college level, the college submits the request to the vice president for academic and the president for approval. Upon approval by the vice president and president, the board must approve off-campus academic program requests. Following approval by the board of the university, must submit the off-campus academic program sites to the THEC for final approval. We discussed and committed that off-campus academic programs are often proposed to accommodate student dual enrolled in high school and college, enhance TSU's pipeline with community college and non-traditional students, and increase convenience for working professionals. The two proposed off-campus academic sites are Modulo State Community College, Fayetteville Campus, located in Fayetteville, Tennessee, and the Turney Center Industrial Complex, located in Long Island, Tennessee. During the committee, we discussed the proposed off-campus sites with President Glover and Dr. Mosley. In this instance, the off-campus sites have been proposed to enhance TSU's pipeline with community college and non-traditional students. Chairman Walker, based on the committee's review and the discussion of this agenda item, the committee voted to recommend for approval by the full board the proposed off-campus academic programs sites as contained in the June twenty-one, twenty eighteen board materials.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the proposed off-campus academic program sites as contained in the June twenty-first, twenty eighteen board meeting materials, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposeds say nay. Any abstentions? The motion is approved. Thank you so much, Trustee Lewis for standing in the gap. I would make certain to tell, Trustee Martin, you did a very, very great job.
Please do.
Allow me to take a personal privilege to acknowledge Vice President of Academic Affairs, Adalisha Mosley, a tremendous job to extend the bandwidth of this university in pipeline in those areas, that's to be applauded because that expands what TSU is trying to do. The next item on the agenda is the Executive Committee report, as the chair of the board. The chair of the Executive Committee, I will report out the actions and information items from today's Executive Committee meeting. The Executive Committee met today to discuss and vote on specified committee agenda items. The committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the March fifteenth, twenty eighteen Executive Committee meeting minutes and approval of the Executive Committee's recommendation or recommended employment agreement for President Glover and delegation of authority to the board chair to execute the agreement. The Executive Committee also discussed the board executive committee procedures governing the president's annual performance review. The Executive Committee discussed a timeline with President Glover in commencing and acting in accordance with the prescribed review process. As required under the procedures, the first step in the review process will involve President Glover's preparing a confidential written self-assessment for submission to the Executive Committee. As I stated earlier, the Executive Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes, the March fifteen, twenty eighteen Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board meetings for the June twenty-first, twenty eighteen board meeting. On behalf of the Executive Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the March fifteenth, twenty eighteen Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the June twenty-first, twenty eighteen board meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes, March fifteen, twenty eighteen Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the June twenty-first, twenty eighteen board meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Motion is approved. The Executive Committee's final action item involves the recommended employment agreement for President Glover. At the March fifteen, twenty eighteen board meeting, the board authorized the board executive committee to create an employment contract for President Glover, subject to the board's final approval. The Executive Committee has developed an employment agreement with President Glover. The recommended employment agreement is similar to the employment agreements of Tennessee Tech University Board of Trustees created for the TCU president, and contains similar terms and languages contained in the University of Tennessee's president's employment agreement. The proposed and recommended employment agreement with President Glover also reflects standard terms in presidential employment agreements at other universities throughout the country. The proposed employment agreement for President Glover contains standard terms, including a five-year term, which is the term for the Tennessee Tech president, termination for calls, and without calls provisions, a provision governing outside activities by the president, housing provisions, tenure, faculty appointments, which President Glover already holds, payout terms related to termination of the agreement. President Glover accepts the terms of the agreement, and on behalf of the Executive Committee, I move to approve the Executive Committee's recommendation, employment agreement for President Glover as contained in the board materials for the board's June twenty-first, twenty eighteen meeting, and delegate authority to the board chair to execute the agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the Executive Committee's recommended employment agreement for President Glover as contained in the board materials for the board June twenty-first, twenty eighteen meeting, and delegate authority to the board chair to execute the agreement, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposeds say nay. Any abstentions?
Abstain.
The motion is approved. This concludes the Executive Committee report. The next item on the agenda is the president's report. The chair recognizes President Glover, who will give her report prior to her coming. Please allow me to take another personal privilege to acknowledge, as I always do, to recognize our wonderful president, to whom we are incredibly proud of, and the Third Good Marshall Foundation, College Foundation, has recognized our president as the HBCU President of the Year. October the twenty-ninth in Washington, DC, and the chair hopes to join her in that to celebrate this. Absolutely. Adored president.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have a short agenda, but I want to include the campus concerns that we brought forth in March and give you the status of what we're doing about the campus concerns. We've met with several members of the faculty, the chairs, council, and others about some of the campus concerns, and here's where we are. The ones are enrollment declines, the division of graduate and professional studies, we have some concern about the nursing program, facilities maintenance, and campus infrastructure, and the customer service. And then I want to go to the campus safety where we are, and then a brief update of some things going on on campus, and then anything else that may come up. So, the first concern was enrollment declines in twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen. I won't do a deep dive into that right now because we covered extensively today, everybody was present, but here's how we address the problem. There was, we have an extensive campaign to contact students with a three-point O or higher who've been accepted to TSU and encouraging them to attend TSU. We've been several places now, we started in Tennessee, meeting with students and members in Nashville and other places, trying to, those who've been accepted, just because you're accepted, there's no guarantee that you will attend TSU because usually when a student gets accepted here, they also get accepted two or three other places, especially the students that we're seeking. So, we've been going around to various locations, next weekend we're going to Indianapolis, while there for another conference, and meeting with students there, and trying to encourage those three-point Os, they're a two-hundred-and-fifty-mile radius to come to TSU. So, we have another extensive campaign to contact the students who have not yet registered for the fall. Many times if we're talking to students, it's because of money, but we're letting them know there are loans available, and we're doing what we can to find funding from any and all sources so we can keep our students in school. And we're focusing on various populations, you know, the community colleges, we know it's a big population for us, we've done quite a bit to go after the community college students, look at the non-traditional students, the non-returning students, the veterans, we're looking at online programs, and we're just starting with just the TSU students who are graduating, to encourage them to choose TSU as your graduate school. So, we start right here at home. Now, this is a, this is a great news, we had two students in Memphis, one had, the one with the TSU t-shirt had ten million dollars in scholarships and to other schools that had been accepted, over two hundred universities and colleges around the country, and the one with the graduation cap on had about nine million in scholarships, and so they both, at two different occasions, they both said yes to come to TSU, they were accepting some of the best schools in the country, and so they liked the fact that we're raising the bar with the quality, and one student, one of them actually said to us, she liked the fact that TSU has raised their standards, their GPA standards, and she wants to come to TSU, so, and we were just really pleased and happy that Kelly Sharflack got in the car and drove to Memphis to meet with her and talk to her, and she said, yes, we're going to come to TSU, that was just a highlight, so we put that in there for you, you can enjoy with us. Next. Concern number two is our division of graduate and professional studies. Dr. Sekman alluded to some of this morning of what's going on with the graduate school, but the primary issue was application processing and enrollment growth. Want to make sure that we responded to applicants in a timely manner because that was one of the issues that it was, there was just not timely responses in the whole system, the IT system was not such that it allowed for fast, speedy responses and acceptances to our graduate school. So, the changes are being made to the IT structure that will impact our enrollment, we believe. So, we're targeting prospective students, starting again with our TSU graduates, to encourage them to return to TSU for a second degree, it just doesn't make sense to listen to the statement that others make about, you don't want both of your degrees from the same school, we tell them, you know, just get past that, and if you got a good school that you're attending now, it's okay to stay there and go to graduate school. Now, we're just trying to increase overall visibility to graduate school, and we're still developing initiatives, and we should compare, we will prepare and share with you the complete plan for graduate admissions, because even though we had a search and process for the dean of graduate school, right now we've asked Dr. Melton to just work through the process of getting us through this IT issue that we have now, and once we get through that, then we'll kind of resume that process of the dean of the graduate school, but they want to hand off to the dean, a new dean, the problem that we have now, and that's almost a setup for failure. So, she's working away on that along with her team, we just commend them on how far they have come on the graduate school. Concern number three is a difficult one, it's our nursing program. The issue with the nursing school is that the students have not achieved the eighty-five percent pass rate on NCLEX, which is a nursing exam. It's not, it doesn't say that they must make a score of eighty-five, but the rule is that students, eighty-five percent of the students who take the exam must pass, so a hundred students take the exam, eighty-five must pass, and in recent years, we have not met their percentage, to the extent that it has become a challenge to both licensing by the Tennessee State Board of Nursing and accreditation. As far as the Tennessee State Board of Nursing is concerned, TSU is not admitting students at this time, it has been suspended, enrollment's been suspended until students can get to the point where they are making eighty-five percent pass rate on the exam. Accreditation, go back. The accreditation is that we're on probation, probationary status now with the credit and body, and it's, it could be much worse than even being on probation because we've been at, we're in our two-year process, our two-year period, where we're now at the point where we must show a good cause letter as to why we should remain accredited, given the situation of the nursing school. So, we're at that point now, it could be accepted, it could not be accepted, so it's challenging to us at this point, but we are at the point of other options, we have been meeting with our dean, well, the, well, just the dean, but also the director of nursing, which is Dr. Maria Ravel, and she's just doing a magnificent job of presenting other options and guiding us through this process, so she is the right person at the right time to lead us in this process. And thanks is contributing to this problem, we're looking at the students, the faculty, and the curriculum, because there's a whole, there's a lot that go into this, and thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for your volunteering to assist in providing some names of nursing consultants to assist. consultants to assist us in this because it's so critical that if we're not accepted, if our report is not accepted, it is very, we will not, we could either remain on probation or if not, we may, we cannot assure you that we will remain accredited by ACN. So we're looking at other options at this point. It is a very serious situation. And so we're meeting, we met either yesterday or the day before, I think it was yesterday, with our nursing department to make sure that we're on the track where we could try to bring nursing back in line and options for our students. So we're looking also at the Commission on Collegiate Nursing Education as a different accreditation body because there are five schools in Tennessee that are already accredited by them. So we're looking at some options, and we'll get back to you with an update on that at our next meeting. Okay? So now, the plan of action in addition to that, we have retained an expert, it was a consultant, an expert in nursing education, and we're performing a complete assessment of our nursing program. And each student who's graduating in December, there are seven, we are assigning personal coaches to work with them on a one-on-one basis to get them through the NCLEX exam. We really put on all the stops to assist our students in this, through this difficult challenge that we have. We raised the admissions requirement, then we reinstated the requirement for students to pass the practice exam before being allowed to graduate. Immediately before I came here, the requirement to take the exam was removed from the graduation requirements. It happened just before I got here, and it's just, and the students have not, rather than not having a practice exam, sometimes it doesn't, doesn't have, you don't really study as hard or try as hard if you don't have that exam to guide you. So we're, that was, that was the initial reason for the decline that started, and by the time it got to us, two or so years later, two or three years later, to find out exactly what's happening, we started to, we started the process of turning this thing around. So that's where we are now. We're still working on behalf of the students, that's why we're here, to make sure they, that every, even if it's a challenging situation, we're still going to work through whatever's going to be in their best interest. Concern number four, with facilities maintenance and the campus infrastructure, we've been implementing some changes in the facilities management personnel, and there's some things that have been happening, work orders. At the time, we had the problem earlier this year, we had 1,229 work orders, we reduced it down to 234. We've been really, we've really working hard to get the work orders processed so students could really have a better experience in the residence halls. And so we started now to assess each building to better understand what's happening and plan better for the maintenance issues because many of the buildings have been deteriorating for the last 20, 25 years. So we're now, as you said earlier, we heard this before, it's the same story you've heard for a number of years, but the buildings have been deteriorating. So we're doing our best to either stop it, stop that problem. We're spending money to make the repairs, but we did get some funding from the state of $6 million, $6.2 million, but, you know, we have a $70 million problem, which still only got 10% of what we need, but still, we were appreciative of that, but we're saying that we have a problem that comes from an Asian infrastructure. I was telling the legislature that Watson, Wilson Hall was, when I was here a few years ago, Wilson Hall is where I lived. And so we had some problems with the construction, and some were even poorly constructed from the beginning, and then they just need some immediate repairs. So last year, we spent about $2.6 million on repairs and maintenance. So we're looking now at how we can improve our infrastructure. We've appointed a person who's going to work directly with the residence halls, and then named a building manager of each building, just so we can report them much faster and do what we can to fix it with, given our funding situation. Okay, we, again, we designated building managers for each campus structure to work with the work orders so they can be completed more timely. And then we have the money, the funding that we received, the $6.2 million is a part, so we've got 90% of the capital maintenance needs still remain. So we're working on a plan to cover that. We agreed this morning to put together a plan of how we're going to improve and raise the funds for the capital maintenance that still remain. Concern number five is customer service. Improved customer service is an absolute mandate because many complaints relate to answering the phone and just certain student services. So I'm making it, and I'm making it mandatory that each TSU employee receive customer service training. We're bringing in a customer service expert to have, everybody has to take customer service training from the office of the president to whoever's the lowest paid, whomever's the lowest paid on the staff. So we're making sure that each person receives customer service training, and we're going to do some things to just monitor and evaluate the customer training. You've heard customer service, and you've heard the, when you hang up, when you're on the phone, can you rate this person's, after you finish your call, would you rate this person's action? Or if you were making a decision to hire this person, would you hire this person? Push one or two. So we're doing some things like that. We have some little smileys outside the door, you push it if you had a good customer service experience. We're implementing some things to assist us with customer service, but we recognize that it is to be a problem. And so individuals who do not comply with it will be sanctioned. So we want to establish a custom, a campus-wide set of customer service best practices to assure us that we will have the best positive perception of our university. So a couple of other things on TSU update. We've been in the news, some positive news, we were very glad about that. I mentioned the two high school seniors, they received the $10 million and the $9 million in scholarships who agreed to come to TSU. Dr. Levi Watkins Jr., Memorial Institute, has been established in honor of Dr. Levi Watkins, one of our outstanding graduates who passed away, and his family has contributed, agreed to contribute half a million dollars to TSU in his honor. And then we, we've been having lots of interaction and conversations and meetings with TSU alum Waffle House hero, James Shaw Jr. He, we met with him, he was in Atlanta last weekend with the TSU National Alumni Association, and he's on TV. I've seen him with his TSU pin on when he's doing interviews. So he's becoming a good ambassador for TSU, and we do have a scholarship in his honor. So then he came to campus, the money that was raised to help the families, he called and asked if he could come to campus and distribute the funds from TSU, and I thought that was a good headline for us also. And then I did mention, we had a nurse, another national conference on TV, on our campus. We're happy we can have our national conferences being brought to campus. There was an internet, emergency management conference came here. And then we have just a few more things. The degree in Fayetteville, Tennessee, that was mentioned earlier, the Michigan State Band's going to have a big performance in Houston that's not being paid for by TSU. We have, we have the summer summer camp, so you just, we have some very positive news items that we thought we would have. We emphasized in the STEM area. Then I'd say one thing with the four alums who went to meet, the royal wedding over the United Kingdom, we thought that was a good, that made national press. It was just, just wonderful, walked it on TV, and people text me all throughout the wedding about that. So I think that's probably enough right now. I just wanted to know, there's some current, a lot of current good news that's going on. So Dr. Moser had mentioned earlier about the numbers, undergrad degrees was up that we produced, it's gone up from a 19% increase from 2014, 15 to now, and it's still going up in degree production. We're working hard on retention so we can get to a higher number of degrees. Okay, the next one, the campus safety. We continue to increase the police visibility, and safety is increased, well, the safety, the students are feeling safer. There was a survey, the students said they felt safe on campus, and so we're glad that the safety initiatives we put in place are working. We're controlling the campus, we use an ID swipe system, we introduced, we introduced a bike patrol, it was just other things that we're doing to make sure the campus remains And the grants and research, the funding, we had a goal of $50 million for this year for federal-funded grants, and this year, we made it again to a little, 52.8 million, maybe a little higher than that by the end of the fiscal year. We have a couple more things coming in, should be coming, that'll put us a little bit more, a little higher than that. And then we rank number five. TSU ranks number five among HBCUs in receiving research funding. I thought that was good, we were talking about rankings earlier. As it pertains to receiving funding and federal research dollars, we rank in the top five HBCUs, and it varies from who's number one, two, three, four, and five. We're consistently in the top five. New construction, as we come to the close, we're planning on two new residence halls this year, and you have science building this year, the food science building, the gateway entrance, arch entrance is being redone, then Alumni House and Welcome Center, where we have the million-dollar contribution from our TSU alum. So here's the construction schedule. The two new residence halls, we want to break ground in that in October, and the health science building, we want to break ground in that in October. I've talked to Ms. Esther Brooks, and she's assured me that October is a date that's doable, so, and there for all three. So during homecoming, we want to make sure we schedule those activities, those groundbreaking activities during our homecoming, two new residence halls and our health science building. And then we have other three that's going to be after that. Food science building will be immediately after that, and then we don't have a set date yet on the groundbreaking for the other two. But we're moving along with our, with our construction schedule, and we're trying to build up our infrastructure, improve our infrastructure. I think that's the round. Okay, so, that's it. So I thank you all very much for the opportunity to lead TSU. We are headed in the right direction, and we appreciate your support and your assistance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the great work that we're doing, and we certainly support you and the work that you're doing. And the next item on the agenda is the chairman's report. I want to inform the board that I've appointed the current board committed chairs to serve for another year, and a year term as committed chairs, and have asked them to continue to have their vice chairs to serve in the roles as vice chair for another one-year term. The committed chairs and vice chairs have done a great job in presiding over and running the vitally important board committees. Many of you know, through our board meeting and all the committee work that we do, we're able to really go deeper and delve deeper. Often, I think the assumption is that we're doing this work in this space, but we are really doing this work minutia, and the deep dives are happening all day prior to us getting in this space. So I want to commend them and thank them so much in handling all of these very sensitive questions and matters and conducting the robust discussions around matters that we bring to the full board. Also want to appreciate each board member's service on the board committees, and thank each of you for your continued participation on the board committees. We are in our second year as a governing board. Our time flies, and I believe we've had a very productive year as a board, I really do. This is an inaugural board for a new governing system for Tennessee State University, and I look forward to continuing to serve as board chair in the second year of my existence. I do want to thank every one of these amazing board members for your service to the board of TSU. Would you help me give them? Yes, I, yes, I'm coming to my amazing, I have the privilege of sitting between two extraordinary women. What a blessing it is. And to my left is my very able and capable and brilliant vice chair, Dr. Deborah Carter. Amazing, and I really, really appreciate that. One of the things that I have really appreciated before I close is the amazing service that I've been able to see firsthand of, first of all, of the cabinet, let me start there, just the amazing detail and work that they have given to this university. I do want to recognize one person who is, this is her last year in the capacity that she has served. You know, in my other profession, I've spoken on the children of Israel being forced in one season of their lives to make brick without straw, and they were very productive making those bricks without straw. And when you think about Ms. Cynthia Brooks, and you think about her role over the many years that she has made brick without straw for this university, we should celebrate her and give her a standing ovation for her incredible service to this university. The president says she's coming back for three months to help us out. You can't let her just go like that. But certainly, we appreciate the work, and then also, we celebrate the work of the faculty and the staff of this great institution, and all of those who work on the campus, in and around the campus, making this happen every single day. I think they deserve incredible applause as well. And I do want to acknowledge, as I indicated earlier, an honor that was bestowed, being bestowed upon our president in October 29th, as fate would have it, one of our distinguished board members is receiving a high honor the very next day, Dr. Edith Mitchell, who we are honored to serve with. And Dr. Mitchell, I will give you the privilege to share with this body that distinguished honor because I think it's really an amazing historical honor, and it represents TSU and how amazing this university is. If you could.
Thank you, Chairman Walker, and I so much appreciate the background and training that I received here at Tennessee State University, and I'm happy to announce that this year, I will be the faculty honoree at Thomas Jefferson University in Philadelphia. I will be the first woman to receive that award. Thank you, as well as the first person of color. So I tell everybody, they're getting up too first.
Thank you, thank you. We're honored also to have Dr. Mitchell's husband with us today. Thank you so much for being here. Finally, I want to recognize President Glover for her appointment as International President of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, which is essentially the role of chair of the board of directors of a national civic organization. Few of us are called to walk in these ambidextrous roles. I, I serve, as many of you know, as pastor of not a small congregation, but also as international presiding bishop of 2 million people around the world, and next week, I'll be in a conference doing that, but I'm always at my church, I'm always at funerals, always at weddings, and we don't miss a beat. Few of us are called to do that, and it takes a very unique space. The thing of it is, is that what this does for the university, it's a special honor, but it does leverage Tennessee State University into places that it has not gone. And the platform that our president has now allows her to do what she's doing and has done on a much larger platform, and so she will need our support, and we are incredibly grateful for this distinct honor for her to serve in this role. Again, congratulations, Dr. Mitchell. There is no further business. We have cake before us waiting. There's no additional business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Yes, yes, it has been properly seconded, and the question is on the motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? We have done it. Thank you so much. We adjourn. Please, please enjoy the cake.